Good morning. It is May 10, 10 o'clock, May 10, 2022. Please stand with me if you're able and to.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united as one for the liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I have a motion to adopt today's agenda. So. We do have an addition later on in the agenda. I'm sorry. I forgot. Or. An action form, a personal action form. Yes, please.
So we accept the agenda with the addition in the under actions, action form.
Personal action form.
Personal action.
Second. We did seconded head and side, working, face will high. Now it's time for a public comment. Number one, this comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. If you would like to make a public comment, you can step forward to the table or raise your hand on Zoom. Also, star nine, if you are on the phone. Seeing no one step forward, we'll post public comment number one and move on to discussion of dress draft lease agreement with Central Iowa Community Services. Morning, Joby.
Morning, board. Okay, what we got here today is draft lease with Central Iowa Community Services for some space at the HSC building. The worked with Carla Webb and Ethan Anderson from the attorney's office. At least we kind of modeled it after other previous leases we've used with other agencies at that building. So it's a preparation for the transition from sorry, kind of community services to the regional. So um see that kind of gave a little definition on what the space includes, a little map to kind of show the areas that that the space is going to be. It's a little bit, it's kind of a different type of lease because right now the space is cooccupied. It will be for undetermined amount of time at this point until we get through our space needs assessment and see how that building's going to look in the future. So um kind of laid out what we're charging for the different types of square footage, you know, ones that are be occupied by their staff. And then other areas defined is kind of shared with community services and then other areas of the building that are just called public areas. Needs a rent fee includes a phone service for CICS because they're going to remain on that county's phone system. So those fees are rolled into that monthly cost. It's just a standard year lease for now. You know, we may look at multiple year leases in the future. Depends on when we start to define what that operation is going to look like and its permanent location. So we just Ethan and I chose to just go year to year for now until we we know more. We're trying to Russell Wood from Central Iowa Community Services has reviewed the lease. They're comfortable with the the cost. If you're comfortable with it, the plan will be us to send it to Russell for his signature. And then I'll bring it back and put it on consent agenda for chair's signature. We will. We are looking to end of this month, first part of June, we'll probably start some of the transitional procedures. We're at both the network cable because they will be bringing in their own internet service provider. So we'll have to run some additional network cables to allow for them to be on their own network because the existing cabling will be used for the phone system. So. And then um we're looking at and I'll bring this back at a later time because it sounds like Carla could probably speak a little better to this. From my understanding, Russell's going to need an office in that building so that northeast corner has got two cubicles in it and they'd inquired about making it a hard wall office and Central Iowa Community Services would pay for that cost. But I have more details on that. So either next Tuesday is kind of my tentative plan to bring it in front of discuss that portion in in further detail. But I forgot bring it up today since we balls kind of I got some cost estimates for that and everything. So can open for questions. Answer the best I can.
So I assume the office that Russell needs is so for when he's down in this particular area at the end of place.
Correct. Yeah, I think that he is relocating to this area.
Oh, permanently?
Yes. Is that correct, Carla?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, yes, we can. Thank you.
You bet. Yeah, Russell is looking at relocating to Story County, so he would he would like to be office here if possible. He is in Des Moines quite a bit as well, but that would give him a permanent landing spot if all of his plans work out. So and if if something falls through for him, it would still be nice to have that office space for other folks who may come and work out of the location here from time to time.
Sure, sure. And then I just had a question on the map. So is the area in red?
Yes, yes, the area in red is what would be the defined space for CICS. And you'll notice that little kind of in the corner there, there's a little in the very northeast corner, there's just a small little square. That is where some of the phone equipment comes in and there's some space available for when they bring their internet equipment in. So I just kind of define that so that that would be where their network equipment would be located. Northeast.
The back stairs, that little one.
This one?
No, yeah, I'm having a hard time orienting.
Okay, that is what their reception area would be. It's the main when you come in their front door. It's that is they will still house their like administrative assistant position will sit there. So I just kind of designated that little area for.
That's fine. It's kind of like what the keeper said. I was disoriented.
Yeah, it's easy. Yeah, I look at these drawings all the time, so it.
Okay.
So it's pretty similar to the space they have now.
Yes, we're just, we gotta, you know, like Carlo moved back to the back and a little bit of shuffling around and that's kind of once the if you're comfortable with the lease, then we will probably start getting the transition because the plan is is come July 1, everything's ready to go so that we can have the internet tested. Make sure they have access to everything they need to so that we don't have a bunch of things right out of the gate.
How does this fit with what we've talked about? Building with space needs study.
We have accounted for that. We we haven't, we're not, I don't have the final kind of ideas. But in the the long term plan of the space needs assessment, we have CICS kind of in their own location by themselves, separate from community services. I think it's the long term plan.
With a couple of different options.
Yes, potentially on a different floor, but.
So it's not even if the if the final space needs study changes this, this is not a huge construction cost that we're looking at.
No.
For this at all. Okay. That was kind of my question.
No, about the only construction cost would be as if we built the private office for Russell and it sounds like they would be willing to front the majority of that cost. So.
I just want to make sure we're not busting ourselves in in terms of anything.
Yeah, and that's kind of why we we chose a just a year to year lease so that it gives us the ability to modify it in the future. And then, yeah, minimal costs, some cabling, which that's falls underneath infrastructure of the building. So and then we'll do some key, but very minor cost to to accommodate this.
This is just for discussion. So direction that we.
Yeah, just. Yes.
Satisfied and.
If you're satisfied with the lease and how it's written, then it'll then it'll go to CICS for their signature first and then come back on the consent agenda item.
Barb, did you have a question or comment? You're muted. You're still muted, Barb. Well. Yeah, it's I guess we can we can circle back around and find out what are.
There, I think it's finally working. Sorry about that, board.
Right.
My I must have an old version of my headphone. It takes a while for the microphone to kick in. Um, I just wanted to point out, please don't forget that the IT department has needs for the store for storage for their server room. I mean, it's it's pretty cramped. It only has room for one rack. And we've been and Joby's aware of this and has it in his long term plans, but we really need to make sure that we're not locking out the server room because it does need to expand. Whenever anybody comes in there, the door opens right into the rack and it needs to at least be double the current size. So as you're looking at that map, you can see that the only place to expand is circled in red for CICS. So I want to make sure that this is temporary and that hopefully someday we can get that room expanded.
This is that is that up here in this top corner?
Nope, that's the I'll just point out.
Okay.
And it's not something that is an option to move it because of all the cabling and the the network and everything that comes into that room. So the only way to make it larger is to expand into some of that community services area.
Midwest.
Correct. Yeah, good point, Barb. And yes, that is because I don't I don't believe that permanently long term that these two agencies can co inhabit the same area. So in the future, we will need to do something and making accommodations for a larger server room is is needed at that facility. As Barb pointed out, growth in itself, and if we truly want fully backed up system, we need to take that into account. So that is in the space needs assessment plan that obviously nobody's seen yet because I haven't got flat draft back yet. So.
And you know, it is our future plan for that to be and and part of it is now for it to be our backup data center. And you can't have a little four by six room be your backup data center. So so yeah, it's critical that this is. And like Joby said, it is in the space needs assessment. So I just wanted to make sure everybody remembered that.
So is there room in there for now, though, for the new cabling that you're talking about coming in?
The CICS equipment will not inhabit that. There will be some, Barbara probably answered that a little bit better, but they're going to have to have they'll have to they'll be on our phone system, but it'll be separate from our phone system. So there'll be some equipment. Yes, there's room for that. But like Barb pointed out, for us to truly back up and have our all of our data storage backed up over there, the room is won't accommodate that. So.
But the space there to the west, those are cubicles, right?
Yes, we we remove.
Kind of.
Yeah, I mean, we could even that defined space like worst case, we just might have to define that space further to the the west if need be. Like if we get to the need before before we're in the position to do something with that building, but we find it that we need to enlarge that server room. I think we would just redefine the lease space and move that wall that currently separates community services office area with the server room and just kind of move everything to the west to accommodate it because that open area is full of unoccupied cubicles at this point. So.
So lots of flexibility.
Yes.
Which is really good about doing all this right now.
Yes.
Great. Thank you, Barb.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
Oh, thank you.
It's a good point to bring up, Barb.
I have a question. Okay. Seeing it on the.
Sounds wonderful. Thank you.
Oh. Yeah. Joby, would you please take that to CICS and let's say sign it, bring it back and put it on a consent agenda.
Will be. Thank you.
Okay, next we have consideration of proclamation recognizing May 15 to 21, 2022 as emergency medical services EMS week. Supervisor Adams, if you'd like to start.
Sure. Whereas emergency medical services are a vital public service and the members of emergency medical service teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival or recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas in the last 10 years EMS has been vital to emergency medicine and to saving lives. Medical emergencies and situations faced by all medical practitioners require quick problem solving and years of training and.
Whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public and other out of hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills and.
Whereas National Emergency Medical Services Week brings together local communities and medical personnel to publicize safety and honor the dedication of those who provide the day to day lifesaving services of medicine's frontline. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the Story County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim May 15 through 21, 2022 as emergency medical services or EMS week in Story County and encourage the communities to observe this week with appreciation and gratitude for those emergency medical services, I mean, adoption of proclamation.
Second, we did seconded Merkin.
Aye.
Heads and side, Basil, aye. Thank you to all of our EMS workers. Moving on to agency reports, we have the Bridge Home update. Hi, Joby.
Good morning, board. How are you?
I am good. I just wanted to say it is nice to be here in person. Since I began at the Bridge Home, I have not had this opportunity because COVID came around. So.
Well, good to have you here.
Yes, I'm happy to be here. So I had submitted to you our report. And I do have a short PowerPoint with just some things that I want to point out and very short, one of our new videos to share. But I would like to start off with questions that you may have based on the information that I've given you.
I would just like to say thank you for the very thorough report. I appreciate it. All of the additional information you provided this year. It's very helpful.
You're welcome. Happy to do so.
I do have some questions.
Good.
So I was looking at your report under, I think it's on page five, where it talked about the number of clients served. And it has total clients served 2,472 and unique clients are 494. First, can you tell me, are those numbers duplicated? Are they duplicated? And then what does unique clients serve mean?
So the way this is, and I'm glad you asked that, Lisa, because I wanted to talk about that too. So total clients served, that's every day, this is how many people we're working with. So it may be, you know, we're working with the family of three Monday or we can with them Tuesday, working with them Wednesday.
So it is duplicating.
That that number there they're counted. The unique is non-duplicated. But I do want to point out in that unique number that does not include our diversion clients. So I would add probably another five, four to 500 to that number. This year, we are going to be able to report in that unduplicated number diversion clients as well. But last year, we did not have that trapped in that manner. So we will going forward.
So what does diversion mean?
So diversion, and that is, I've got that in there following on page six. So diversion is really one of the, I mean, this is where we serve the most people. It allows us to assess a client circumstance before we offer them the solution that will serve them best. And it helps us to identify, are there alternatives for them besides coming into congregate shelter? Not because we don't want them to come in, but because it can be traumatic for people to come into a shelter where it's we make it feel like a home, but it is, there's rules, you know, there's curfews. There's things you have to do and follow. So sometimes when people are experiencing homelessness and there's been trauma involved, that can just add to it. So if there are other options, one example would be if a family's been staying, let's say, with a grandmother. And they call us and they say, hey, we've got to move out. My grandma cannot afford groceries for us anymore. How can you help us? Can you get us into shelter? Staff will go through the assessment with them that I believe I did include in the appendix and say, well, what if? What if we give you a $500 gift card and you could go get some groceries? Do you think your grandmother would let you stay maybe till the end of the month to buy a little more time to try to get them into housing instead of bringing them into shelter? That's also the process that we use when we are at capacity. By going through that assessment, we try to help to find other options of where we could refer them to. You know, is there, do they have family in another state that would be willing to have them come in and stay with them? And if so, we'll we'll get them on a bus ticket and get them to that family. We always call that family first. Just to be clear, we don't put people on a bus and just send them somewhere. You know, a real life example of that, there was a gentleman here and he had family down south, maybe it was Alabama, who had a business, had apartments, and the individual said, well, I can go to Alabama. My brother has an apartment. He has a job for me. But I can't get down there. We said, well, if you give us his contact information, we call him and confirm this, we we will get you down there. And so that would be how that particular process would work.
Another question. So you just said that the diversion numbers are not in your procedure 21.
They are not in the unique numbers, the non-duplicated. Yep.
In the non-duplicated.
Yes.
So, okay, so I was just looking back at the asset book. So your stats for actual stats for this year 21, you have on here 935, which would be unduplicated. Your unduplicated, you have clients here is 494.
Yeah, and Lisa, I will have to go, I will have to go look at that because the way asset has us add in some numbers, it it's different than how we report them. And and I can get email you guys that information and a better explanation as to why there is that difference in there. Some of it being, it's just popped into my head, is this is Story County clients.
Right, right.
I'll look into it, Lisa. I don't.
But but and and that's fine. But if I'm looking at at your location of residence, it has aims in Story County comes up to a little over 700. So that's still.
Okay. Yeah, yep, I'll I'll check it out and send an email and let you know what the discrepancy is. I, one of my staff does scorecards, so I'm not 100% what numbers that they put into that. So I'll check that out.
Yeah, I I appreciate just so that we know what that difference is.
Yep.
And just for my colleagues, just in case you happen to look at, we noticed that in the blue book where it has actual and then proposed for some reason, then your page, the actual said this for your 21, 22 versus where it should have been 2021. I don't think you probably even noticed it on there because all the other pages say 2021 and that's what it should be, but it took me a while to look at.
What, what?
So right at the top, you know.
What is, where's this information from?
We have to put in for your actual, you know, proposal, you do this on your.
Is this the asset application?
Yeah, it's on your agency stats.
Okay.
So yeah, so so I think it's just a typo is what they.
Yeah, we typically don't change those dates.
I don't think you can.
Yeah.
Okay, anyone looks back, you might get confused. I looked back at previous books and realized that.
Okay.
And the other pages were correct, that one, just that one page. Yeah, well, I didn't look through all the pages. So.
Okay.
Just so you know.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Looking at your diversion assessment questions. You've got some good questions in here. I'm looking at the very last step, step four. Make a paperwork. If client is literally homeless outdoors in a car, uninhabitable, uninhabitable location, you can't get them into shelter. Read some forms. I know you do more than that. What do you do? Because I'm just trying to. What are your, what are your, it's a client is literally homeless. You can't get them into shelter. If the shelter is full, if the client chooses not to enter this, not you realize you can make work. Or where are your options right now?
So up on page. I have that process in here. Scroll up here. So also in that appendix is a list of local resources if we are full.
Central Iowa shelters for men, shelters for women, families. Is that the resource list?
Yep, that's the resource list. On page seven, I have our at capacity process. And so if we are full and have to turn them away, we refer them, we try to refer them to those other resources in that are available in that list. Sometimes we can go to Salvation Army who may able to help with a couple of nights, which may give us enough room to have something open up to get the individuals in. Otherwise, our option is to refer them to those resources that are on that sheet. And if that's an option they want to take and it's an issue of travel, we will, we will get them there. And if that, as it continues, if that's an option they choose not to take, we tell them just keep calling us back every day, come in every day. You never know when there may be a space open up. And we'll get them in as soon as as we've got that space open if they don't want. And we'll get them in as soon as, as we've got that space open, if they don't want to go to any of the other resources in the area.
What is your best?
For men, we have eleven beds on the main campus. For women and children, this is where the crunch really comes, because our current facility is not designed for women and families. In the basement, we have two units. In those units, we can either fit six women, three in each unit, or two families. For the motels, we try to keep those for families. Just because that works a little easier for them, but we do have space if there are not women in, in that lower area. This changes based on our budget and based on need. We, we try to have four consistently, but there are times when we may have seven. Or, you know, during last year, eleven. So it just is, it's based on, we don't say, we're only going to do four. You know, if it's the middle of winter and it's freezing out, we're going to open up more rooms based on what our budget can absorb.
Just to circle back to the total number of clients and unique clients, in your total number of clients, that includes your diversion folks.
Yes.
Without diversion, yeah.
You said there was about four or five hundred.
For unique. Yeah, and I, I, I'm totally estimating Linda, because we did not count diversion that way last year. To be able to give you a unique number, I, majority of them are probably going to be unique. Unless they don't have an option that works for them, and maybe three months later, they come back. And we have to go through the process with them again. But I cannot give you that number for last year, we'll have it this year for our final data.
I was, I was going to ask, when you started, when you started tracking the diversion?
We started tracking the diversion last year, but not, we didn't have it in a format where it can be pulled out by non-duplicates. This year, it's in a format where we're going to be able to pull it out. We're not have duplicates, so that number, that unique number will more accurately reflect the actual number that we are serving. It will then include diversion. The reason it's not in there now is because the database system, we're required to use the HMIS systems, what we are required to use for our HUD funding. Diversion is not currently tracked in that system, so we have to do it ourselves in a spreadsheet. So when we pull our numbers up in the database, the diversion numbers aren't in there. So what we've had to do this year is modify that spreadsheet, so we can sort it and get the unique number.
Are they working on adding diversion to the reporting?
They did have it in there, because diversion is a HUD process, so that questionnaire, we didn't make that up, that, you know, comes through us for HUD. And then, not sure why, and Linda Monden is the one that has this historical knowledge, but a few years back, they said, you, you no longer have to track diversion. Which, I don't know what. Your guess is as good as mine, but that's, that's, so that's why the diversion numbers aren't in HMIS, and there's not a a place to put it, because some of the data that's required for HMIS, we don't get that at this level of assessment.
When someone's turned away, and you talk about they've used all their shelter time, so how much shelter time are they allowed to have?
Thirty days.
Thirty days per year?
Yep.
Do you ever make exceptions?
For the thirty days? Yep, that is based on a client-by-client basis. An example of a reason we make an exception, and this is really the only reason. Let's say we have a family who has housing secured, they have a rental unit available, but they can't move in for another week and a half. So we're not going to put them on the street for a week and a half to wait to get into their rental unit. We'll extend them for that week and a half until we can get them moved into their rental unit.
Did you say that's the only exception?
That, there would, they're very specific. If they're working on their plan, you know, they, we don't let people hang out for thirty days and just do nothing. In our program, they're working, they're working toward housing. And if at that thirty days, let's say, maybe they're a week from getting a job, and then they'll be able to get housing, we're going to let them stay a week until they get that job, so they can get into housing. We don't let them stay and hang out if there isn't a hard, okay, we're going to be in housing by this date. The majority of the people, it's that thirty days or less. And that's, when they come into the program, they know they have thirty days, with the exception of motelling. In that, it says, it's a week-by-week basis, because that's a much more costly way to shelter folks. If they've been in there for a week, they've made no effort to even get a housing plan up and rolling, staff will tell them, you know what, you've got next week, and then you're going to need to, you need to move on if they don't get their housing plan in order and start working towards home. We, our goal is to turn over as quickly as possible, so that we can open beds for others. What we are hoping as we're looking long-term, that we will eventually see shelter clients kind of plateau at this, this number, whatever that number may be. But our housing programs will continue to grow, because we're trying to get them into housing to be stable, so that a year and a half later, six months later, they're not back at our goal. So that's why, what, and if you look at other areas that have good housing programs that were, we've got going now, you'll see a, a number kind of stabilize of people needing shelter and housing programs continue to grow.
You went pretty closely to Sarah.
Yes, we, this year, so they had emergency vouchers. I forget what are, I think it was Story County and Boone. They were available with people lived in Story County or Boone. There were seventy-some shared between multiple agencies. And so we did, we got several people in there. I think the last list I saw was twenty-plus people that we had helped get those surfer vouchers.
Are you okay if she moves forward with her presentation?
All righty. So in here, I just want to point out a couple of trends that we're observing that kind of make our stomachs roll. And as I said, share a video and then just share a little bit about who our clients are and where they come from. So if you just want to flip to the next slide, please. This, I'm sure all of you know this, but a lot of people do not know this about us. We've been around since nineteen eighty-five. We are dedicated to ending the cycle of homelessness. We're not just looking to put a shelter over people's heads until they can move on. That's not what homeless population is anymore. It's people in our community who we need to get them housed, and so that's what we focus on. We've got five county areas that we serve, and twenty-twenty was when we changed our name. There's our mission, vision, and values. This is what we base everything we do on. We are not a handout. We are a hand up, and we literally help people get over what barriers they may see. Oftentimes, the first barrier people have is they have no form of ID and they have no birth certificate. So we have to help them get a birth certificate. And that's not an easy process, if you've ever tried to do it, and it's not a quick process either. Okay? So this is our continuum of care, which I defined those in there for you, but you can see we've got our short-term programs, and then our longer-term housing programs. One thing that we didn't mention, or haven't talked a lot about is our street outreach program. That program is growing because we are moving into other areas. So as I mentioned in that, we have a library outreach program, which has been very successful, both from the libraries and in our end, as well as our clients. Okay? So this trend is something that, that is unsettling for us. You can see that our clients, there, there's, there's nine times out of ten, there's underlying circumstances that have to do with mental health, drug disorders, and, you know, it's a what came first, chicken or the egg scenario, honestly, when you talk to people. And we do have people that are, they have insurance, they have Medicaid. Oftentimes, we help them get onto Medicaid. But the uninsured clients, that still continues to grow. And so that's something, as we continue to move forward, we're anticipating that disparity is going to continue to get bigger. So as we're looking future and towards things, we're, we're talking, how, how are we going to help this before it hits us? Or what could we do programming-wise? So that's just one area of concern. The mental health is a big, big issue for us. Is, once we get our clients into housing, for example, getting them the mental health treatments and services they needed is, is not an easy thing to do. You know, we connect with all our community partners, but if there's any kind of need for like a short term, let's say, maybe two, three-week stay for one of our clients, we, we don't have any options to be able to get them that, that kind of treatment right now. That is an easy thing to do. Okay, you can go to the next one, please?
Can I ask a question on that one?
Yeah.
Do you like work with CICS?
Yep.
And do you have like, do you get like? So you can speak to each other?
Yes, yes, yeah. Release? Yeah, yes, yeah.
So you get that so that they can see if they're in their system or not, try to give them assistance that way?
Yeah, we do, you know, when clients are willing to do that, we'll connect that way. You know, we do forms of release with other agencies. We are doing one of our new programs, even with workforce programming, those types of things. So we definitely will do that, if that's an area the client is willing to go. Chronically homeless, so I have that definition in there for you. And the reason I wanted to point this slide out is you can see that eighty-four percent of the people we work with are not chronically homeless. And that's the number that reflects, I mean, all of our clients are community members, but that eighty-four percent, those are most of our families, especially right now, with everything that happened with COVID, and now with the prices increasing, we're seeing people who've never needed our help before. And so that, you know, that non-chronically homeless, they, they probably also have jobs. So, you know, it could be the person checking you on a Hy-Vee. They could sit you next, next to church with you. But that's a, a big concern for us, because when people say, well, I never see anybody homeless, how can you say there's that many people? You know, this is why, because it's people in the community. And we, you don't see them, we can be talking to them and you don't know that. The other part, again, here, that's concerning, is chronically homeless, that is growing. We are seeing more of that. Fortunately, with our housing program, we've been able to get people that have been homeless ten years and ages, get them into housing. So those programs are going to help with some of that, but that number is growing as well. Okay? So individuals served. This just shows you, we're anticipating that there's going to be forty-two percent growth in the number of clients we've served by the end of this fiscal year. Last year, that twenty-four hundred was staggering for us. This year in March, we're already at that twenty-eight.
And that's your entire region, not just straight.
Seventy-five percent of that would be story county. So most of it, but yes, and I do, I do have a slide that'll show you that in a little more detail, too. You know, so I know there's been a lot of questions and discussions this year about, why are you full? Why are you full? Why are you always full? When you have eleven beds, and those are just for men, and two places for women, it's very hard to do this, to serve the population. So moving forward, you know, we're working on some kind of interim solutions with our end goal being to have a new campus with a facility that is actually functionally built to serve our clients, families, women, everybody. Okay? Outcomes, so this is what we look at when people come out, so repeats. That means, within a year's time, how many of the people we served needed to come back in a year and have services again? You can see that it's very low and even getting lower this year. I believe, right now, we're at a ninety-eight percent rate of people that we've worked with do not need to come back and get our services. So that's something we're very proud of, you know, the, when the folks that go through our programming, it works. Our turnaways, we hate this number because that's increasing, but again, you can relate that to the growth in the numbers we're seeing. Then we have a number of people who exited, exited with interview, that's really an internal goal that we sat out for us when we started doing this kind of metric tracking. Because we would find prior to us kind of doing this kind of looking at our metrics like this, people would be in shelter and then it would just, they disappear. You know, they might just not come back one day, and we would have hardly any exit interviews to know what is actually going on with people. So now we, you know, we have most of our people exiting, are doing exit interviews, which means our caseworkers are working with them through the entire, when we exit, they exit, they're exiting into home, are exiting into something else. So that's what that means. And then you see our entered housing number. I believe last year, just in our shelter program, those that came through our shelter program, seventy percent exited into housing. And then income. What that means is we monitor during the time they're with us, from when they came to when they leave, did they sustain, increase, or get income? So did it go in this direction? And we're seeing a really good percentage of that happening as well. That trend, what I said, fifty-five percent growth in our turnaways and our waitlists. It breaks our hearts, and it's housing, too. I think housing waitlist, there's, well, it's about sixty every month, folks who've got on the housing waitlist. Okay? This is just a bit about, again, our families, I talk about that a lot, they're still increasing. This new one here is people sixty-two and older. This has just gone crazy this year, and that is not something we've seen before. Typically, sixty-two and older clients were minimal for us. But we're seeing that number bump up this year as well. You know, and it's, if you're living on social security only with groceries and everything, you cannot make ends meet. And unfortunately, some of these folks are now ending up at our door. Okay? So here's the breakdown for FY twenty-two. So this is through March, so of the twenty-eight plus. So of the 28 plus that we serve, 69% were Story County. So you can see that, you know, we do have numbers going typically, it was probably about 70, 75% was Story County. Now we can actually get you the exact number and you can see that it has gone for the total number, it has gone down. However, there's still 8% growth in Story County. So while the piece of the pie might be getting smaller, the numbers aren't. Okay? Play on this? So this is where our clients start. This is a place where the couple was living for 10 years. In a makeshift school bus with no electricity, no running water, nothing like that. You can see this is on street outreach. We had, they had to trek way back through that muck in the mud and that's where they were living. And for them, living there was better than coming in to shelter or into our programming because they knew they had that. They were scared to come into our program because they were scared they'd mess up. And then they wouldn't even have this to go home to. We finally built trust with them. We told them what the programming is like, how we were going to help them be good tenants. We were going to help them stay housed, stay healthy. And they finally came into our housing program. If you go to the next one please. These are our clients after they've found their hope in a home. All of these folks, we've worked with them from shelter to housing. And that's the difference that happens once people go through our program. Never checked out our website, do so. Got a lot of good information. There's any other questions?
You sure have last county area. You do not have any facilities, physical facilities in the other four counties. So if somebody in Green County needs emergency shelter, they run to Ames.
No, no, we keep people in their communities. We put them in the motel rooms.
Motels in the
Yep. Because you know, as I said earlier, these are community folks. They don't want to leave. So we keep them in their communities.
So with the statistics you have and the numbers that you have on waitlist have turned away. What you're talking about a new campus with increased capacity. What capacity are you looking at and in what strat do you want to me?
So what we're looking for, for the new campus in Ames is that we'll increase our bed count for men to 22, women to 22. But the sticking point with us in the new campus is it's not going to feel institutional. It's not going to be a big room with 22 bunk beds. What we're looking at designing is individual pods with bathrooms where four people stay. So much like the house, you know, they have a room. Then we will have specific family units. Also set up similar, not located in the same areas, the men and the women. We will have functionality for our housing folks to be able to meet with clients there. And we're also working with further human service agencies who want to move their office in their campus area into the same location with us. And again, the intent is not to bring people from the other counties here. It will operate the same with us still using motel rooms until we're able to get facilities in the other counties. I can tell you Marshall County is very interested in having an actual facility there. So if we're thinking, they will probably be the first one to help us with that and help us get funding to be able to do that. And then boom, will probably be the next. Although the numbers don't quite pan out like that, that, that's kind of how it's looking at this moment.
Well, the, well, the campus includes some permanent supportive housing. I know I've looked at the plan.
Yeah, yep. With, in that area, that's where we've, the eightplex that you have okay, so aside some potential funding for the one bedroom, one bath apartment units. What's going to be great about these is it will allow us to put some of our highest barrier single adults there and they'll be right by campus. So we'll be more accessible for them if they need help. It also frees up some of the scatter site apartments that we're using through Story County Community Housing Corporation. So we can use those for families. So that's going to be a, a nice addition, our supportive housing specialist says every day, can we put people in there? No, 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 it's not, not, not ours yet. So onsite we have four apartments. Those are family housing. So those are multifederal for families. And then for, for our housing program, we have a total of 11 units. So seven of them are scatter site, just, you know, in the different areas. But in our rapid rehousing program, for example, those are, those are everywhere because we just partnered with landlords who want to give our folks a chance to get into housing. And so they would be in a variety of spaces. What, and what with our supportive housing program, the reason we're at 11 and that's where we stopped is because a caseload is 10 units for one supportive housing specialist. So our goal in FY '22 is to add another 10 here in Story County. And then 10 throughout the other four counties.
Are you getting a lot of people for the money?
Oh, yes. That, that's been a lot of fun. We're really excited about that. We have a volunteer who comes in, in those haircuts and that's, she has a line. That's a huge hit. But what I like about it the best is it helps our people to reintegrate in, into the community, you know, they get to go there just be people in the community, interact with other people in the community, and they're not those people in the corner or those people under the bridge. And so it's, it's been very, very successful. Again, libraries involved in that as well as the Elks and other human service agency clients will come there. So Martha's House Hope clients come and attend. So yeah. Yeah, you're very welcome.
Nice to have you here in person.
Yeah, glad I could. We can be in person again. Yes, thank you all.
Moving on to consideration of minutes. Next we have consideration of personnel actions and we need to add an addition of a new higher effective May 16, 2022 in the auditor's office for Wayne Rowett at $15 an hour.
With approval of personnel actions associated with the addition.
Consideration of claims. Moving on to consent agenda. We have no public hearing items, additional items, consideration of sending FY '22 budget amendment publication for public hearings on May 31st, 2022. Hello, good. Thank you for running over here to join us.
Oh, I'm here just not in person. I'm in spirit over there.
I know, I know.
Okay, brief overview. I'd like to amend the budget for the final time this fiscal year on May 31st. I gave you all the documentation per department, per fund, per all that pertinent information along with the copy of what needs to go to the paper for the notice of public hearing. Overall, I just want to make one comment. Basically, we are overall, the salary related adjustments were lowering by 146,725. If you'll notice, there's quite a few departmental salary adjustments mainly on insurance. Alyssa and I have talked to you guys many times about that. Insurance is one of those things that we're doing our best guess when we budgeted and we finally, or then we true it up at this point. So yeah, we're lowering by 146,000. The other highlighted items that I have in my that, that I was going to talk to you about. Like I said, all the salary related items I, I have adjusted. But some departments have asked for adjustments individually. The treasurer's office needs to increase their postage and mailing by $7,000. Then some other minor little changes. The animal control needs to raise vehicle fuels and maintenance and veterinary care by almost $9,500. Secondary roads is asking for a $685,000 amendment, mainly bridges and culverts on that one. Conservation, there's a lot of miscellaneous moving around of dollars. Some of it is because it's not going to happen until next year. So we're lowering this year's and some of it. So yeah, overall, we're lowering their budget by 139,800, but expect most of that to go back into an amendment coming up in August of next year. Human Services Center is increasing a couple of things, mainly communication services, facilities. Big one, that, that FEMA, we budgeted it for next year. It's not going to happen this year. So the generator for this building for FEMA, it's in next year's budget. So I'm taking it out of this year's. IT has about $93,000 worth of unplanned expenditures. So she asked for a $93,000 amendment. P and D has a couple, like $2,800 worth of legal and postage that they'd like to increase. The Justice Center increased utilities. Building maintenance. And then the big one in countywide is Storycom. I, we're, we're making a payment today, or you approved a payment today for to be paid Thursday. I did reach out and find out what the schedule is. It's going to be the end of, just, it's going to be the end of the calendar year before we get the next one. So I'm carrying over another 972,000. And then, you know, I'm just basically trying to adjust some items that we know are going to go over and under and over and just in the countywide. And supplemental, the big one is we're going to, we budgeted to split out the election equipment that we're buying. So in the 23 budget, we put half of half of it. So I'm amending out half of it now and it's in next year's. Any questions on anything?
Is this in your projection of what you have to pay to the region?
Yes, yeah. Thanks for bringing that up. I'm sorry, I kind of glossed right over that. Yeah, there's, I'm, I'm adjusting. Betsy just emailed me yesterday and then how she, told me how she wants to handle it and I told her I was fine with that. So I guess what we're doing region wide is all the auditors are going in and amending the budget for what they think they're going to have to spend to get it down to zero. Which is what I am doing here by putting 430,000 in. And then because she's going to use April ending fund balances from all of the counties in the region. Estimate bill. And then she's going to ask all the auditors to then do a special handwritten at the end of the fiscal year to zero out their accounts. So that's how we're going to handle it. And we're going to hope for the best. What I probably will do is I will pull the revenues, the end of the, the end of June, or June, I'll pull the mental health rev, or I'll pull the revenues from the treasurer's office and hope that nothing comes in the last two. I don't know how else to, to handle that. Absolutely none. So when we get the amendment completed. I did do a summary on what the ending fund balance projections will be for the end of June. There's any questions on that? Pretty much what I told you last week when we were talking. So it hasn't changed a whole lot. Okay? So overall, we're going to raise we're going to increase revenues by 1.15% and decrease, oh, excuse me. We're going to decrease and increase revenues according to my, and we're going to decrease expenditures by 0.91%. So so I'll send it for publication unless you have any, any other items you want to address in the amendment. I hope we're good. I hope we're good on mental health. That's my biggest concern.
Yeah, I didn't know you were so good at juggling.
Right? Well, and the, the worst part is, you know, since we budget by service area, that's its own service area. So I can't go over in that service area.
Right.
But if I put too much in the budget, then I show a negative in this and I can't have a negative fund out. So I, I'm, I'm just hoping at this point in time.
Well, all the other, all the other, all the other Well, all the other, all the other, all the other reasons are going through the same thing, so.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
So we need, we need direction to take it to publication.
Correct.
We have that consideration. So I'll make the motion sending the 22 budget amendment to publication for public hearing on 5/31/2022.
Moving on to consideration of updated election security policy, waiving seven-day review.
Good morning, board. So happy for you today. A revised election security policy. It's required that all counties have an election security policy. We've had one since the early aughts. Periodically, we look at this in anticipation of our new equipment. It was, you know, a good time to go through the policy and make sure that it matched just items we have from our vendor. The, the big changes however are to the appendices. The oath for election officials was updated per, by the Code of Iowa and also what's considered Class D felony for election misconduct, which is part of the security agreement we have all staff sign. That was also amended legislatively, so we wanted to make sure that our policy reflected those changes as well. I am asking that you waive seven-day review. This is the county policy. The county has made a significant investment in election equipment. It's the county that bears those costs for all federal elections, so we want to make sure that that's properly covered. Also, several of your departments have access to our election equipment, so I will work with your staff to make sure that they sign our election security agreement as well. And probably liaise with Alyssa for most, it's mostly facilities and IT that have that access, so to make sure that, you know, all of our keys are crossed and our eyes are dotted, so. But otherwise, we're not sort of crowdsourcing this policy. We don't, it doesn't have a lot of implications outside of the auditor's office. You know, it's my duty to make sure that that equipment is secure and safe, so.
And that everybody understands.
Yeah. So I didn't know if you had any questions for me today. Those, those are the main, the main changes were to the precinct election official oath, which is appendix B, and then what can consider election misconduct in the first degree, which is appendix A. There are?
Yes.
Oh, I think I had trouble submitting that. Did I submit it twice? Yeah. Oh. Yeah. When I was, you know, when I was submitting this to the Agenda Center, I thought I had submitted it and then I looked at it and it wasn't there, so I submitted it again and maybe I just that's probably operator error on my part.
But it's not there to compare.
No, it's not a before and after. No, I'm sorry about that. I didn't, I didn't.
That's okay. Actually, I just noticed that I read the first one and then I, I thought the second line was just a continuation and then I just realized, oh, that's a separate PDF.
I did not notice that.
I have no questions. I just wanted to make sure that.
Yeah, no, I only, I should have only uploaded one document. That's what I physically put in the file. Okay.
I would approve the updated election secures, the security policy, waiving seven days.
Thank you.
Moving on to consideration of purchase of replacement tasers from Axum Enterprise Inc., $11,648.75 budgeted. Hi, Mike.
Good morning. So this morning, we have a request crest in front of you to go ahead and replace four tasers for our officers. The units that are being replaced are about nine years old. We, and they are, as I mentioned, they're beginning to fail. One is not operational and one is, is malfunctioning, so unsafe in the field. We do have four officers and so that exists, that presents one for, of course, for each officer. These newer units, which we're requesting to purchase, expect to have a life of about 10 years. They do have a five-year warranty. And it's something that, you know, of course, we hope to, we never have to use, but it's important piece of, of equipment in our continuum of force when needed. So we are asking for your approval. The Conservation Board last night did consider this and, and they are recommending approval for this item. It's, we do have the capacity in this year's budget to do this without any additional money. So although it's unbudgeted, we didn't anticipate on replacing this year. Like I said, they're about nine years old. We were going to wait to get those replaced, but it is time to do it now. So with that, I ask for your consideration on that and, and for your approval. You have any questions?
And Mike, you just said you do have the funds within your budget to, to cover the costs?
We yeah, I'm just turning you up a little bit. I didn't, I didn't understand all that question, Lisa.
Fine, but you said you do have the funds within your current budget to cover the cost. You're not seeking additional funds, is what you're.
That is correct, yes.
Did you have this budgeted in next year's budget?
We did not.
Thank you.
Purchase of replacement tasers from Axum Enterprise Inc. for $11,648.75, 75 cents from conservation, from conservations. Second.
Thank you, board.
Next, we have consideration of funding request for Stepping Stones Child Development Center in Slater for $50,000.
Yes, I placed respect on the agenda. In anticipation of our discussion last week, I read several AG's opinions, but it was only after a vote that I was, I got a call back from the auditor's office where I had asked for some further information. And then attached, have attached to the agenda today, the opinion that the auditor's office had about us being able to, under the economic development section of code 15A, provide funding, a grant to a private agency for economic development. And it states specifically 15A, 1A. Economic development is public purpose for which the state or city or county need to provide grants, loans, guarantees, taxes, status, or financial assistance. And before the public funds are used, we have to state that we determine that public purpose will reasonably be accomplished by dispensing or use of these funds. We did, there are some things that were really important to look at, and first was promoting economic development. My understanding is this proposal eventually creates 30 jobs, which is not insignificant for a town sized Slater. And the presence of a childcare center, the system check and housing development, other businesses, and serves a public purpose, story, county community health assessment, which was conducted in 2020, is to child care. It's one of the top needs in the county and identified Slater as a childcare desert. I think it's important that you don't pick winners or losers. We don't know of any other proposals to develop childcare centers later, nor is this economic, something that would attract an existing childcare center from another area, and that's one of the specific prohibitions in the code. I think the concern I had last time was that and I've talked to the developer about this. I, I felt like in providing a grant to a private business, which can in effect turn taxpayer funds into a profit for private business on down the road. I would have been more comfortable with a loan, but my understanding was that the SBA loan the owners applying for does not allow additional indebtedness. I talked to the person and I asked her, I proposed her an idea of her business so it couldn't be a loan to pay us back, it's not that, that it instead be something which I called pay it forward, which she'd be willing to consider that $50,000, converting that usually her, maybe her average weekly cost to keeping a, you know, how many, how many weeks of that would be and to say that she would be willing to pay it forward by utilizing that sum basically for somebody who did not, was not able to afford childcare, but didn't have any other funding, such as state funding to come through. And she said she would be willing to consider that and she said, yes, I can do that.
It's like a scholarship.
Yeah, I'm paying it forward rather than paying it back. So I did, I did also just this morning, but yeah, but last night Slater did agree to provide some kind of, some kind of assistance in also in $50,000. They had talked about a forgivable loan. They don't know yet if that would work with the SBAs. Concerns about getting a loan, so they didn't take, they didn't take action last night, correct?
Yes, later City Council at their meeting last night did consider this. They did speak positively about moving forward in doing either a forgivable loan or a grant and then asking her to meet benchmarks as she goes, that something, forgive a percentage of it as she reaches each of those benchmarks, like breaking ground and, and opening doors and employing so many individuals, that kind of thing. But they are moving, we are moving forward on doing that and some giving it the 50,000 in a grant or forgivable loan. We're just working through the verbiage at this point.
Did they talk about if it needed to be a grant, what they would do or what, what would happen then if for some reason the business didn't get started? Or is that the reason for the preference for the forgivable loan?
That's the preference for the forgivable loan. They, they would prefer to write it as a forgivable loan, but Ms. Umlin was going to check with SBA to see how that verbiage satisfied their their needs. Not sure if they're quite on board with any verbiage of loan, but.
Yeah, and I guess I wish we knew that, but I didn't, frankly, think it's true quite that far in putting it back on the agenda. We can do it as a grant with the, you know, with the scholarship we talked about to pay it forward, but that does not cover, what if we it's not open?
Ms. Umlin is on, on the Zoom. Liz, are you able to unmute yourself?
Hi, I'm here. I'll do my best. I'm also, it's lunchtime with daycare kids and I got a household, so.
It's lunchtime.
So did you, have you found out if the SBA would accept forgivable loans?
I emailed my banker this morning and she, I got an automated email back that she's out of the office until the 16th. But once everyone goes down for nap today, I'm going to try, I have her personal cell phone, so I am going to call her. I don't know if she's out of the office doing conferences, if she's vacationing, I don't really know. But I will call her cell phone and see if I can get an answer from her or if she is able to email some of her, the other people we are working with within the SBA to get a for sure answer on whether that verbiage would be allowed.
But you were able to run the numbers on the possibilities of a pay it forward slot in your center and you think that that is doable?
Yes, yes. If we, I mean, obviously, like, best case scenario, I'm full capacity with kids and giving away one slot for that, I think it was close to four years is what we had, we had discussed, would be doable. And my, my question on that is, am I able to, to vet those families? Like we take, let's say we take applications for that position or that, that pay it forward position, or let's say somebody wants to nominate a family. Because I would like to see the family trying to improve their life and this would be a chance to, to help them get a jump start by offering them free daycare so they can go to work and they can start saving money to, to make a better future for themselves and their child, I guess is kind of what I'm, I'm getting at. That way I'm not giving it to somebody who's sitting at home and not trying to, to take advantage of this, this pay it forward option. Does that make sense?
I, I think we would need to really hammer that out a little bit because we want to make sure that there's no discrimination issues like, and that we're being equitable as far as, you know, who, who may or may not be able to access that. I think we, I think we can talk about all of that.
Yep.
I just think we have to be mindful of making sure that we're.
Because my, my thought, my thought process is, let's say this family, a family enrolls and they enroll with an infant and that infant is with me for those four years. But at a four-year-old, four-year-olds don't go to school all day, so what happens when that spot's no longer free to them, but they still need that childcare? Do they have the ability to start paying for that spot for that final year of daycare? Or how does that look long-term for the business af- after I fulfill the pay it forward option for the county? You know, are they, are they going to be able to pay for daycare for another year until kiddo goes to kindergarten? Or do they need before and after school once they go to kindergarten? And is that something that, that they're going to be able to start doing? And that's why, and that's why I say make, you know, making sure that they're, they're trying on their end. I'm, I'm trying to help as well. And I just want to make sure that they're, they're trying to make sure that they're creating a better life for themselves as well, essentially. And I don't want to discriminate by any means at all. I want to make sure we're doing it fairly.
Yeah, don't, don't misunderstand. I, I just want to make sure that we're protecting, protecting
Yep.
everybody
Yep.
in, in the conversation.
Really, it'd be easy to get into micromanaging. Yeah, I would, I would. It's, it's to pay it forward, to acknowledge that there's taxpayer money going into this and to get some public good. Not that there isn't a lot already, but to make absolutely clear that we're saying there's some public good associated there with that. And my, I think it could be really easy to, out of good intentions, try to micromanage a business. And that's not what I'm looking for.
Okay.
Liz, are you a nonprofit?
No.
I didn't think so, I just.
And 15A does not require it being a nonprofit. It was interesting, the auditor's opinion that I, I right attached, kind of starts talking about nonprofits and then starts, starts quoting the code. That's why I'm straight back to the code. And because it's not, it does not require, it does say that, it does say in the code that it can be, that we can provide grants to private entities.
Yeah, I'm just looking, and my question came because the, right before the number one on that information from audits, you know, the office. It just said that the Iowa Attorney General officials, numerous opinions stating the same, however, there are two situations where public funds may be provided to a nonprofit. That's, that's where my question. That's, that's where my question came.
And that's verbiage from the auditor, but when you go to 15A, that's why I did that this morning. I saw that. And I went to chapter 15A and it is not anything about nonprofits. See, they, they kind of meshed that together.
Yeah, they're, okay, okay.
They also give, by the way, misquote. It's easy thing to do on the second page. What says 15A2? It's, under C, it's 15A1 2. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I checked that too because I thought that's not right.
Right, right.
So. I get, to me, the, the, the question is, should we act now or should we wait until we know whether we could do it as a forgivable loan? Or can we just do it as a grant? If we just do it as a grant though, let's say something happens and Ms. Ullman ends up not being able to start the business. Can we recoup the money is the question. I think that's what Slater was thinking.
We have an established program to, to do zero interest loans. And so they just weren't prepared to, I mean, it came up quickly enough they weren't prepared to redo the program at this time to try to get financing available. So that, they were comfortable with that because we have done some forgivable loan portions of our program, but not to, not, not worded it as a grant.
And I think if, if we're, if we do it as a grant, then we can write that into the agreement. Write what into the agreement. But if, that if for some reason something falls through and she's not able to start the center, then those funds would come back to the county. They wouldn't just, they're not just gifted.
This is for the purpose of this only, and if it doesn't happen, it must be returned to the county.
There will be expenses that happen on them, you know, throughout the development process. So so, sometimes some money gets spent and something doesn't come to fruition. So would we be saying yeah, that, that she would have to take that into account, that that money would need to come back to the center or not?
And my question is, I, I guess you're asking if the business doesn't open, but yeah, are you concerned that the building doesn't get built either? Or just that the business doesn't get open? Cause if the building is built, then we've got tax property, property tax dollars that are going to be generated for years to come. That we also have to. And then putting it into the estimator, Story County's estimator, she's going to be paid $75,000 a year of property taxes. That is going to be generated no matter who owns it or what business goes in there or it's going to be a two million, over $2 million valuation. Just something else that.
Think about all of that. I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, I have a little reluctance with that. For it to be a loan. But also understand, we know childcare is such a great need. Don't want that to be the barrier to jump starting something as well. I do like the pay it forward. I think having, I think like some reporting coming back of progress where where things are at, that we know that it's kind of moving along would be helpful, whether it came from Liz or even Jennifer. If you happen to know and you're, I'm assumed going to be monitoring the same, same type of way. Would be helpful.
One rule the Slater Council backed on, probably don't know that yet, do you?
We wanted to get an answer from SBA as whether we could write it as a forgivable loan or, or we would have to verbally put it as a grant. And then we will, I will draft something and they'll call the special meeting as soon as possible. Once we know. Want to hold off until they get an answer?
I was thinking, you know, I think it's obvious that we are supportive of it. We just haven't figured out quite how we want to do it. And um, yeah, I, you know, when I found out this morning that Slater was looking at that, I thought like, I can understand, I can understand that. I understand what you're saying about property taxes. But let's say, I mean honestly, something happens, the building doesn't get built, but some money's put into it. You know, and I, I don't know what all things could happen. So let's, you know, I think Slater did think about that. Let's just wait. Let's bring it back after we have the final answer. Forgivable loan may make more sense.
Can you, can you shoot me an email or shoot us an email? Yeah, I'm sure Liz will keep me informed as soon as possible. Since she hears from her banker.
It'd be easy enough then to put on our next agenda.
I mean, I, I think you're right. I think it's, it's clear work. We're trying to find a way to get it to, to, to do, to support the project in the right way, city council as well.
Yes, so that's good. Jennifer, thank you for coming.
Yes, thanks for tuning in, Liz.
Thank you.
Look forward to hearing from you.
I will email as soon as I have an answer from the banker.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So. Taking direction on that. Moving on to departmental reports, environmental health quarterly report, and it's still morning.
It is still morning. So I submitted a written report to you guys for review. What I'll do is I just did a brief presentation with the highlights of some of that stuff. And I figure we can circle back at the end if there's any questions on the written report that I provided. All right. Oh, thanks. So the first thing I wanted to highlight was the water infrastructure grant for unsuited communities. I think I've talked about that in the past where we sent out, there was a grant that came available for the state of Iowa and that opened up in January. And we sent out about 128 postcards and IFA closed application submissions at the end of April. So we during, from the 128 postcards that we sent out, we had 42 inquiries. People, property owners that called wanting information on the grant. And we actually out of those, we only had about 14 that were eligible. And 12 people actually worked with me to apply. So just under 300,000 is what we actually applied for so far. We've had four systems approved. The last ones that we submitted pretty much went in the last week and a half of the submission deadline. And I know that they are working very hard to go through those. So right now I know we have two Infernal and two Ames that have been approved. And I'm hoping that some of the others are going to come through as well. Uh, that, yeah, that grant does basically put in a whole new system. And it's, it's a grant, so not a forgivable loan or anything. So it pays for their complete system. And so, yeah, so we're, we're very excited because some, most of them were either ones that, well, they all had to be failing or incomplete systems. And there were several of them that didn't, were going straight to drain tiles or just had something that were failing, have been for a long time, but they were very expensive systems and nobody wanted to do anything. So.
So just to be clear, there aren't any, the Ames ones are unincorporated area with Ames address?
Yes, everything. Um, so it actually, um, yes, they're all, I think there, there might have been one that was in the city limits, but is still on, it's in a septic.
Didn't they have to, didn't they have to hook up?
No sewer was available. So, yeah, so if, if sewer was available within so many feet, then that we could have used the great money to connect. But all of these were ones where there wasn't, or there was one that we thought maybe, and there's some complications on connecting to that pressurized system that didn't make the feasible. And so we're kind of still at the, okay, we have to put a system in. But yeah, those were definitely options we looked at, but most of them were all in unincorporated areas.
About 20,000, 24,000 a system?
Between, we had some as low as, um, most of them were prepackaged units on very difficult sites with slopes. But we had some that were coming in around the 12,000 mark. And then we had some as high as 30. And those were ones where they were going to have to like, just, it was very difficult to navigate the sites. And they are, and some of it is too, is um, so we do the bids and then the actual price that comes in. Everything is in such flux as far as what is the cost going to be when they actually hit. So when the actual, if they get awarded the grant for the ones that did, the invoices will come in. So they can't get over that amount. They always have to come in under or at that. And then we review those to make sure that it's, you know, for eligible costs, stuff like that. But yeah, we did have a couple that were quite high.
People who required the, or eligible, what were the situations?
So they weren't eligible because either their system wasn't failing. So one of the, the requirements is that your system had to be in a state of failure or non-existent. So the ones, some of them that did call, they were like, oh, we have a system that's old and old is not necessarily a reason. So that was some of them. Then there was, like I said, two that were technically eligible in talking to them, but I never received any further follow-up. They were just kind of calling and kind of, there were several people that like, is this a real thing? And a lot of people that called towards the end were, you know, hey, I heard that this is real. And so there was a lot of that, but so.
That's verbiage.
Yeah. So I mean, we're, we're getting somewhere and you know, and so that's good. And I don't know if there'll be another round or anything like that. I think this is kind of what we're looking at for this. It was $10 million that was awarded to the state for private onsite systems. So. Right. So one of the other things that we did was the Story County Housing Trust had a, a grant available and I made an application for some ideas for septic grants would be for a forgivable loan and if it's replaced or actual grant too, depending on what the amount is. I asked for 150,000. It's a two-year grant. We did get that award. Uh, it is going to be based on income, the people that need assistance. And we're still kind of working out, right now it, we just got the contract. So it has to go to legal for review. It goes to Board of Health for approval on the seventh and then it'll come back to you guys. But I know I've kind of worked with Lisa a little bit too on the budget and how that'll work out. So you'll see probably not, this, it won't affect this current budget, but it'll, it'll, there'll be an amendment the first part of the year, Lisa said. So, and then, yeah, we're still kind of working on the application process and the exact how it's going to work, but it will help offset, you know, the, there is a limit, so it will probably cover the cost of an entire system. But it would cover some repairs. It would also include maintenance such as for pumping if people didn't have the ability to pay for that. So we would be able to use it for that funds as well. So pretty excited about that. So. All right. Something else that came up, I know you guys have heard about it, are the pumper bill that was on the Senate floor, 616. That did go through this, the committees and the House and it did get passed and signed by the governor. So I kind of put up there what the bill actually says. And basically it does not say that we can't have our ordinance. So our ordinance is still in effect. But it just basically says we can't monetarily penalize or fine. So we are kind of working at some different ideas. I kind of talked to legal and the Board of Health about that. We have seen a decrease in the amount of pumping and we did not, we kind of stopped pushing anything until we knew what the outcome of the bill is going to be. So we didn't do any additional mailings. We are going to do some of that coming up shortly. Trying to, we've identified some of the, you know, the ones that we know are in compliance and we're going to try to remove them from that list and send out a new mailing to people, let people know that it's still a requirement, things like that. And the enforcement part of it, like I said, we weren't doing any fines or anything at this point in time anyway. So it really doesn't change it. We just kind of want to figure out. And there is some in the actual wording there that does, you know, have some grounds for challenge if, you know, the way it's worded. So. But those were some of the things that came up. I did go speak in February at the subcommittee meeting when it was there to kind of let them know our, you know, take on it and how it was working and things like that. So.
So in the mailer that you're, that you will send out the next one, are you planning to include the information that there might be grant funding available to cover the costs?
Yes. And so that is kind of, you know, that's kind of why we were waiting a little bit too is we want to see if we're going to be able to have that available and things. So, um, and yeah, and then kind of work out some details, but we'll, we'll probably have some of that available as well.
Well, I think the more information we can get to people, I mean, I, I had somebody contact me and said, well, you know, systems don't fail. You know that septic systems. And I said, no, honestly, I don't know that. And I'm quite differently. And I think of, you know, just to me, that's somebody that lived out in the country all his life. Thought that septic systems did not fail and everything was just fine.
Right.
Now, once you put it under the ground, I think that, I think, you know, not to use the scare tactics, but just to have a strong educational program and say, here are the things that can and do happen.
Right.
And the longer you let it go, you know, that's why companies are good thing because it lets you know what's conditioning yourself to tend this in. I think.
Yeah. And I know our, our, our septic pumpers do a really good job too, as far as when they go out there. You know, they're letting them know about the ordinance and they educate them on some different things as far as, you know, what they're seeing and what they should, you know, do or if they should call us for follow-up information. We'll get calls that way when they're like, so this is what we're seeing, this is what they told us, we should see what, how should we work with this? And we'll try to answer those questions. So just for some professional development, we had the Iowa Environmental Health Association is a group that I belong to. I actually was in the Illinois version when I was, when I worked on the Illinois side. But I was actually elected to their board to represent environmental professionals in Iowa. So, so yeah, so I'm pretty excited to be involved again with a, a state affiliate. So. And then just other highlights, there's been a lot of change in environmental health. So we split from planning and development, went across the hall. And so I kind of just threw in a couple of pictures of our space. There's still a lot of changes to come as facilities kind of determines what they're going to do with our public area. But I know our storage room, you can actually walk inside of it and find things now. So that's good. And so it's, we've been there about a month now and things are starting to come together and it looked good. And then we also have some new faces. So I wanted to, our new admin actually started today. Her name is Laura. Have her here today. So, and I'm going to be bringing her around to interview certain people. But so, yeah, so we do have some new faces in there. So it's great. And then we'll let you. Yeah. And then I guess just any questions on the report or anything else that I think you might have? Pretty much just threw a lot of numbers at you on that report.
This is a very good report.
Yeah. I'm really glad to see that you brought that money in to Story County for systems. You know, replace the floor and have some additional money for pumping in particular. You know, that, that might help encourage people.
Yeah, I'm hoping so.
It's not a, it's not a huge cost to many of us, but to some people it could be.
Exactly.
If something's found, those funds can help with a repair.
Exactly. So we're hoping that we'll see some of that. It'll be interesting to see. I know that I was told that, you know, that this is maybe something that we can apply for again if, you know, at the end of two years. And so hopefully it's something that we can continue to grow and, and modify as we need to. So.
Yeah, it'll be interesting to see the volume of calls that you, that you get.
Right. Yes. And especially like right now, except we're just developing it all and trying to figure out exactly how we're going to do it. But once we have it, we're able to promote it, then that'll be good. So.
Did you get any response back from Dan on that?
I did, actually. The field, it was referred to the field office and they have look, they've been looking into it. And we've actually had. look, they've been looking into it and we've actually had, I've, he, that Tom is the main person I've been talking to there at the field office. And he and I have both received several calls from, like, interested people that were interested in buying the property and what they have to do. Realtors have called us just to see, so I know that there's one person that was looking at it and they kind of rehab campground. So there, they were trying to find out information on what could be done. I know there was one person that was interested in possibly turning it back into a single-family residence, which in getting rid of the campground. But, so I, we don't know what's going to come of it yet, but, yeah.
But, yeah, there are tensions.
Yes, yeah, and, you know, there, we're just kind of trying to figure out exactly what needs to be, what's going to happen with it, so.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Great, no other reports, upcoming agenda items? Next week, I'm hoping to have just some information and discussion about participating in the City of Ames' Juneteenth celebration, having a table there at Ban Shell. And I'll be bringing forward a proposal for some funding to help with food trucks and that, just for discussion. Moving on to public comment number two, comments from the public on items not on this agenda. The board may not take any action on the comments due to requirements of open meetings law, but may do so in the future. If you'd like to make public comment, you can step forward to the table or raise your hand on Zoom. Seeing no one will close public comment number two, please on assignments, committee meeting updates, and announcements from supervisors. Ben's working, should I go first?
Sure. Um, kind of got a lighter week this week, it looks like. Got a meeting this afternoon to plan for the next headquarter's WMA meeting. Meeting with staff on some issues and tomorrow night at quarterly nine-one-one service board meeting. And that's it, next week I'm going to be on KHLI, so I'll be sending out an email from folks asking for some asking for any comments about what's going on in the county. Share with the public then. Next Monday, we have Conservation Department representation. That seems to be where I've been.
Yeah, and I've got a lighter week this week too. I was just looking at the next couple of weeks and I'm like, okay, those are jam-packed.
Okay, yeah. Get you a funny email this week.
Well, that's, that's a couple things to read about. It's really my big day here, my day Thursday. I have CEO, workforce development, the regional CEO at meeting. And then I have a aging resources meeting this Wednesday. It's not our regular meeting. It's one of our committees. So I'm I'll tell you those two from home as they start early in the morning and then come in right after that. Then I also have, as you siblings at the conservation on sixteen. Um, I still have on my calendar, which is all made to be deleted from all the dates. I have civic plus hold again. So are those on to be canceled?
I don't know. I think that one is actually still there.
Okay.
Civic plus website.
I have it on two o'clock.
Oh, Monday, I have it at three o'clock.
That could be. Yeah, I think that's still an actual meeting.
Okay. So I don't have that.
We'll talk still again. Yeah. And I'm just going to make a mention that next week, starting on Thursday, the nineteenth, the state special Olympic Games, it will be so I will probably be, I would at least one of those days or part of the day.
My week is also, this is one of my light weeks too. I have this meeting this evening in Boone. Tomorrow at eleven, story city urban renewal area plan amendment, they're having a discussion there. I didn't know if that was something that one of us needed to plan to attend or our staff attends or not.
Maybe usually it's intense.
I took the information to her. I just haven't followed up with her on that yet. But I'm I'm open all day tomorrow, so I can do that if maybe. And then Friday, I have a an alternatives arrest person meeting. And then de-cat in the afternoon. I have a NACO Arts and Culture Commission meeting Monday afternoon, conservation, and then I've got civic plus at three.
Should we say that now? But, yeah, it's still morning. It could change.
Anything, anything further to discuss?
I don't know.
So moved in second to head and side.
Merkin.
Basil, I, thank you.